I'd like to call the April 18th, 2012 Board of Education meeting to order. First item is the invocation. Ms. Hethridge?
Let us pause for a moment of silence remembering the victims from the Virginia Tech tragedy that occurred a few years ago.
Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and it will be led by Andrew who's playing Sir Walter Raleigh tonight. Come up here, Andrew.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, honor God, and a visible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Andrew.
Tonight, our school spotlight is on Jarvisburg Elementary.
Hello, Dr. Dobney, Superintendent Scholler, and board members. My name is Josh Rickerzell and I am a fifth grader at Jarvisburg Elementary. We are here tonight to present and share some of the characters from our Living Wax Museum that was held recently at our school.
My name is Krista Sawyer and I am a fourth grader at Jarvisburg. In order to prepare for our museum, we had to learn about our person and their significance in America's history. We accomplished this by reading biographies and researching information and facts. We then became authors and wrote our own biographies about our person.
Here is a short video of our museum.
Hi, does anybody know who the state capital of North Carolina is known for?
Mr. Simmons already guessed.
Hi, I'm Sir Walter Raleigh. I was born in 1552, I died in 1618. I was famous for exploring the New World and bringing the potato and tobacco into England along with Chief Manio and ranchers. I was one of the Queen's favorites until she became very angry with me and I was beheaded.
Who 32nd First Lady of the United States was?
Eleanor Roosevelt. I was born October 11th, 1884, in New York City. My husband was Franklin Roosevelt. We had six children. While in the White House, I worked as a janitor there and fought for women's rights. I passed away in 1964.
How many do you know about the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution?
The 19th Amendment was established to give women the right to vote.
Hi, I'm Melissa Carrigan. I was born November 12th, 1850, in Johnstown, New York. I traveled America to give speeches if I were able to vote.
I was a leader of the Suffolk Jack Movement. I was an abolitionist, but truth is, I fought against slavery. My friend Susan B. Anthony helped me.
Has anyone ever found a Girl Scout in 1912?
Well, I did. My name is Julia Coromel. I was born October 31st, 1860, in Savannah, Georgia. My nickname in the wrong note was Daisy. Daisy is the name of the youngest girl in Girl Scouts. Today, there are over 3.7 million Girl Scouts across America. I died in January 1927, Savannah, Georgia. However, you can find me on poster stamps or in the Women's Hall of Fame.
Hi, I am Dolly Payne Todd Madison, wife of James Madison, the fourth president of the United States. I was born on May 20th, 1768, in New Garden, North Carolina. Accomplishments I made in life was one, I saved the George Washington portrait in the White House because the British burnt the White House down. Another accomplishment I made in life was I brought the yummiest thing of all, ice cream, to the White House. I married James Madison and he became president and I became first lady for eight years. I loved to entertain and host parties at the White House. Sadly, I died on July 14th, 1849.
Do you know who the 16th President of the United States is?
He's out. Finally. Mr. Lincoln, right?
I am Abraham Lincoln. I was born February 12th, 1809, in Alachan, Kentucky. I taught myself how to read. I love books. I wrote the Emancipation Proclamation. I was also president for the Union. After the war, I was shot and killed by John Vogels Booth at Ford Theater.
This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All of you did a great job. Too bad up here, we were only three for six. Were all of these students from Ms. Williams and Ms. Heflin's class?
Yes.
You did a great job working with them.
Thank you.
They're the dynamic duo.
Once again, the kids did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll have our public comments session. First, Angela Rodriguez, our Child Nutrition Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Scholler, and other board members. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to do a quick recognition of our first place winners in our Top of the Class Nutrition Essay Contest that we held, which focused on nutrition and a healthy lifestyle and how they play a major part in success. We had five out of our 10 schools participate. A total of 54 essays were received. The local school Nutrition Association of Child Nutrition Staff members supported our essay with monetary donations of $10 for our categories of K through 2 and 3 through 5, and a $25 monetary donation gift card for the first place winner in our 6 through 8 category. Unfortunately, we didn't have anyone submitting for 9 through 12, which also had a $25 monetary gift donation from the local Child Nutrition Association. The winners, the following winners, were also forwarded to our State Child Nutrition Association for North Carolina. They will be entered into a group of submissions from all the districts and the counties and in mid-May to end of May, excuse me, May, we should find out the state winners. And if any of ours are chosen, I'll be contacted and then they'll also be notified in our June category conference that we have. Those winners will be between $50 and $100 awards. I'd like for you guys to help me in congratulating the following students. I believe they're all here tonight. Our first place winner for our K through 2, which the categories K through 2 and 3 through 5, had to submit a one-page essay and it could have been written or full words and this participant chose to do a full page. We were all very impressed with the submissions that came in. It makes me honored to know that my kids are growing up in Currituck. I'm a 91 graduate and I'm honored to say I work for Currituck County Schools. The first place winner was from Central Elementary School. The K through 2 was Haley Dozier. This is her first time knowing she won.
Okay, and our category of 3 through 5, all the way from Knox Island Elementary, which had one of our largest submissions, thanks to Mr. Wright, was Caitlin Morrison. And in our 6 through 8 category, from Moyac Middle School, Brendan Shillings.
Thank you for the, to the principals and the child nutrition staff and teachers that participated in the essay. Child nutrition, was honored to have this opportunity.
That's great.
Congratulations to the three of you. Next, Renee Doughty, JP Knapp, principal.
Renee, could you pick the mic up? Yeah, absolutely. This way I won't drop it. Good evening, Chairman Dobney, members of the board, Superintendent Scholler. It's my pleasure to be before you tonight to introduce a very special young lady to the Early College. This is Ms. Valerie Babola. Valerie is a junior at the Early College, although in credits, she's far beyond a junior in status. Valerie, this year, applied to go to Governor's School and Valerie was selected to represent not only our school, but Currituck County in Governor's School. Correct me, you're going to Governor's School West?
East.
East, and the campus will be, of all places, her hopeful future alma mater, Meredith College in Raleigh. Valerie hopes to go to attend Meredith after she graduates from the Early College and become a math major. To tote on that just a little bit, Valerie is currently a junior with us. However, she was the only sophomore we allowed off-campus last year to twin colleges over on the community college campus at COA because she's so far academically ahead of some of her peers. Valerie, as a junior, already has over 30-plus college credit hours as a junior again in high school. She is the only student to carry a straight A average in her college courses at the Early College. Those include Calc 1 and Calc 2 this semester currently at the College of the Albemarle. So, we are very impressed with Valerie. She's the kind of student that you hope to get every once in a while come through your system because sometimes you learn a little bit more from these kind of students than you do, than they learn from us. And we're very proud of the accomplishments of Valerie and are so proud that she's going to represent not only our school, but Currituck County at Governor's School and at Meredith College this summer. So, congratulations to Valerie.
Congratulations, Valerie.
We want you back, though. We want you to come back and teach. Currituck County wants you to graduate.
Okay, next, Renee Doughty again. Does JP Knapp, project graduation?
Sorry. We do come before the board tonight with our seniors. We are in the process of discussing project graduation. As you know, we graduate earlier than the rest of the district. May 25th will be our graduation exercises. We actually finish school up on May 22nd. We're in the preliminary planning stages, it being our first one this year, about project graduation. And just come before you tonight to, one, talk a little bit about some of our proposals and get your blessings if we should proceed to move forward. Right now, we're looking with our senior class, we have a meeting coming up with our senior class to discuss what we'd like to do. The proposal that we're coming before you tonight is to look at the feasibility of doing an overnight field trip. It's not the typical field trip, so my understanding is, after talking with Ms. Yvette, that because it's an overnight field trip, but it happens after the school year, it's not typically something we have to submit paperwork to. But I think it's worth noting for you guys to kind of take a look at it and tell us what you think. But our students have considered going to Williamsburg to spend the night after graduation and do a two-day park hopper pass between Busch Gardens and Water Country, USA. I'm in the planning stage with the directors over at Busch Gardens and Williamsburg Marriott to look at the feasibility and what pricing would be per student. But just to come before you and let you know that this is something we're planning, if we could have your, you know, wishes for that, is something that we can go ahead and proceed with, or if we need to scale back and kind of just stay local here and do something like that. But right now, the cost per student is pretty minimal, considering that a two-day pass to both Busch Gardens and Water Country is looking at $77, which is pretty unheard of because Busch Gardens admission tickets right now are running about $70 for one day pass. So, we're getting two parks for the price of one, basically. One night or two nights is something we're discussing with the students because we recognize that families come into town and to take them away for two days is not always in the best interest of the student, given that parents are coming down and it's Memorial Day weekend. But again, we're in the planning stages, the students have the input as to what they want to do. This is just one of the options that we have on the table. So, before we went and did all the nuts and bolts of it, we just wanted to make sure we had your blessing before we proceeded.
Okay, I would just ask that you, you know, submit a formal request to Ms. Scholler and then email us the request because I think there is something about, any trip after school is not considered a school trip, is that correct?
I was just thinking, in the past, as far as most in high school, had your project graduation, we did not have that on the board agenda. It was pretty much just like Renee had asked for your blessing.
I'd just, I'd like to check with the attorney just on personal liability for you folks.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Not a problem whatsoever. And like I said, this is our first go at it and our students have some pretty high expectations of what they expect out of a project graduation. So, we just wanted to come before you and say this is something they're thinking about before I put any more work into it, you know, is this something that's feasible? And of course, the other thing would be to say, I know in the past, the board supported project graduation at the high school and now we're the second high school graduating a group of seniors and we're going to come to you as the same thing, to ask for your donation or your support in helping us fund our project graduation as well. So, don't leave, don't forget us because we are the new ones on the block and we are graduating seniors this year too. So, we want to make sure that we're included in those opportunities as well.
Thank you. Be assured, we won't forget you. Okay, next, Lisa Mizell to talk about exchange students.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, Superintendent Scholler, the board members, and also student advisors. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Lisa Mizell and I'm a resident of Moyoc and a parent and even a grandparent of students in the Currituck Schools. I also volunteer as the area representative for Youth for Understanding, which is the organization that has placed exchange students at Currituck County High School the last two years. I'm here tonight to thank you for providing these honorary Americans with an amazing experience through our faculty, our student body, and our athletic programs. The placement of international students in our schools not only have benefited the exchange students, but also the students in the community of Currituck. The presence of the exchange students really advances our students and our faculty's global competitiveness and broadens our students' personal and educational perspectives. Our American students explore and appreciate new cultures and experience life from a different point of view from sharing their classrooms with exchange students. YAFU even offers scholarships for American students to study abroad and this program is available to any of our Currituck High School students. In reality, one of our students could even go on exchange to Finland for the entire school year for a total cost of just $600. And information is available through the Guidance Department and through the organization YAFU. According to a new report published by the Council on Foreign Relations, increased international educational experience and foreign language instruction will increase both the US students' ability to compete in the global marketplace, as well as the US national security and report and, I'm sorry, as well as the US national security. The report US Educational Reform and National Security was compiled by a task force that was consisting of 31 prominent educational experts, national security authorities, as well as corporate leaders, and chaired by the former head of New York City Public Schools, Joel Klein, and former US Secretary of State Condoleezza Rice. I felt that it was important to share this information with you tonight so that you may consider the enrollment of one international student at Currituck County High School for the 2012-13 school year. My family is interested in hosting a 16-year-old girl from Switzerland who has a high proficiency of English, French, and German. She maintains good grades, she's of remarkable character, and she's interested in sports. I'd like to submit her student file for your review at this time, in addition to the report that you may be interested in reading about citing the need for more global education. Tonight, I have with me in the meeting, one of my students that I'm currently hosting, Lorenz Zeller, and he's from Switzerland. Lorenz enjoyed a lot of success this fall on the soccer team. He's currently on the tennis team in the second seat and just having a ball. So, I want to thank you all for allowing him to be here, for giving him the experience that he's going to be able to take home, and also for opening our schools and allowing them to receive the benefits of having that student in place. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like approval of the agenda, but before we do that, I'd like to take off an item from the consent agenda and that's item 1A, number four. And it's for the tenure report and said it was for information purposes only. And just so there's no confusion when we vote on this, I would like to remove that item. Do I have a motion that we approve the agenda without item 1A, number four, tenure report?
So moved. Seconded.
Have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, overnight field trips. Ms. Scholler?
Yes, board members, two of the field trips you've already approved, that's the Currituck County High School softball tournament that took place April 6th and 7th, and the Currituck County High School State Math Contest, which is taking place today and tomorrow. Also, JP Knapp has requested to attend the Science Olympiad in Raleigh, April 27th and 28th.
Do I have a motion for approval? Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, student school board member report, Chelsea Heflin.
The students in Currituck County, ranging from elementary school to middle school to high school, have been super involved in the past month with math competitions and Battle of the Books and I would just like to say congratulations to all of them who participated because that is an awesome thing to take part in something like that at such a young age, or even in high school, because you're challenging yourself and that's something that I think our county takes great pride in. The regional math competition was March 29th and also on Monday, April 16th, the first annual middle school 24 math competition was held at Moyoc Middle School. Students from CCMS battled it out against the students from MMS to see who would be the champion of the mental math game. The students had a great time and enjoyed getting to know each other. First place went to Jazze Banks, a sixth grader at CCMS. Second place, Lindsay Lichens, a seventh grader from Moyoc Middle School. Third place, Marley Walls, a sixth grader from Moyoc. And fourth place went to Chloe Pickell, a sixth grader from Moyoc. And again, congratulations to all of you who participated in these competitions. At the high school, cap and gowns will be delivered to seniors on Friday, April 27th, during all lunches. I'm excited. Also, in the past years, we've done this as well, but students from Ms. Jarvis's AP US Government and Politics class will be serving as election assistants at the primary, at the polls this year. And the director of elections will be coming to the school to train us to learn how to take part in the elections and we think that it's going to be a great thing to help us out with our AP exams because a lot of the questions can be about demographics of voters and stuff like that. The CCHS Band Spring Concert is May 8th at 7 o'clock and they're really awesome, so you should go out and see it. Senior Beta Stoles for graduation are available for purchase until next Friday. Also, Ms. Newborn asked me to mention, I'll probably have it at the next board meeting, this year, we've decided as a school to take on a new look for graduation. All the seniors will be wearing red instead of honor grads wearing white or girls wearing white. We're going to be a unified senior class because we did this journey together, so we're going to graduate together. And honor students will still be recognized because they will have a white stole that says CCHS Honors embroidered on it, so they will still be recognized. But as a senior class, I think we can all say that we greatly appreciate that we're able to graduate unified together like that. Also, JP Knapp's prom will be held on Saturday, May 5th, which I'm sure they're all getting very excited about. And their senior recognition night will be held on May 10th at 7 o'clock. It's also the time of year for advanced placement exams, which testing begins in early May, so good luck to all the teachers and students that are preparing for those tests.
Thank you, Chelsea. Next, Jonathan Jackson?
Yes, I'd just like to add on real quick about the regional math competition that Chelsea just mentioned. Two students from Currituck County Middle School are moving on to the state competition in Fayetteville, North Carolina. And those two are Anna Griffin, first place in geometry, and Bryce Dederman. He did not place, but he was qualified for geometry. The whole team itself came in second. And at the high school level, the math competition in Chawan University, CCHS's Tucker Jarvis and Ricky Hill placed in the comprehensive section and will be heading to the state competition tomorrow. Although there is already a community emergency response team present in Currituck County, a teen Currituck County SERC team has now been introduced so we can increase the participation of the younger generations. And in athletics at the high school, the tennis team is seven and seven overall, but they've secured third place in the NCC standings at six and four. Their conference tournament will be at Edenton on April 25th. The golf team is trailing first flight by a few strokes for first place in the conference. The baseball team is doing an excellent job this year and they're tied for first place with first flight as well. I encourage anyone who's really looking for some good entertainment to go see the athletics at the high school. And with that, yeah, I'd just like to introduce everyone to go there.
Thank you. I think there was an elementary 24 competition, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
I wanted to mention, who, was it a student from Moyoc Elementary that won that?
I couldn't tell you the truth.
Oh, it was?
Yes, it was.
I just submitted to the paper, but I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
Do excuse us, but yes, there.
Well, you guys did most of the high school stuff in middle school, so.
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda, budget amendments and transfers for March. Kelly McClellan, Finance Officer?
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, members of the board, Ms. Scholler. I come before the board tonight to get the board's approval on recent budget amendments and transfers. The Currituck County Schools' state budget was increased by $2,822 during the month of March. In our local budget, the local budget was increased by $13,634 in 16... a teen Currituck County CERT team has now been introduced, so we can increase the participation of the younger generations. And in athletics at the high school, the tennis team is 7 and 7 overall, but they've secured third place in the NCC standings at 6 and 4. Their conference tournament will be at Edenton on April 25th. The golf team is trailing first flight by a few strokes for first place in the conference. The baseball team is doing an excellent job this year, and they're tied for first place with first flight as well. I encourage anyone who's really looking for some good entertainment to go see the athletics at the high school. And with that, yeah, I'd just like to introduce everyone to go there.
Thank you. I think there was an elementary 24 competition, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
I wanted to mention, who, was it a student from Moyac Elementary that won that?
I couldn't tell you to be truthful.
Oh, it was?
Yes, it was.
I think you just submitted to the paper, but I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
Do excuse us, but yes, there.
Well, you guys did most of the high school stuff and middle school, so.
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda, budget amendments and transfers for March. Kelly McClellan, Finance Officer?
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, members of the board, Ms. Scholler. I come before the board tonight to get the board's approval on recent budget amendments and transfers. The Currituck County Schools state budget was increased by $2,822 during the month of March. In our local budget, the local budget was increased by $13,634.16. Those were from some special revenue grants, the JCPC funding, Knights of Columbus, and reimbursement back from Currituck County for the work we do on their EMS vehicles. Our federal grants budget was increased by $247,268.5. Those were recent budget amendments approved by the Department of Public Instruction for some carryover funds from last year. And our capital outlay budget was increased by $5,443.82, and those were insurance proceeds we received from hurricane damages. Are there any questions the board has on any of these?
Do I have a motion for approval of the budget amendments and transfers for March?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, additional appropriation from capital outlay funds. Kelly?
I come before the board tonight to ask the board for an additional appropriation of $34,000 from our capital outlay fund balance. I've been working with Mr. Simmons, our Executive Director of Maintenance, and there's some projects out there that we would like to be able to complete before the end of this fiscal year, and I'll go over those projects and the projected cost. We would like to convert Knott's Island over to propane heat. That's at a projected cost of $5,000. We need to put a new roof on the storage trailer behind the maintenance building with a projected cost of $4,000. We need to do some high ceiling cleaning, ceiling cleaning and painting at the high school gym, projected cost of $7,000. We need to do some parking lot repairs at Knott's Island. We're looking at a projected cost there of $8,000. We need to regrade the football field before next football season for player safety. We're looking at a cost of $7,000 there. And we need to replace the replacement cooling tower at Currituck County High School. We brought that to the board earlier, and we had an approved budget of $100,000 after receiving bids. We were receiving bids of 140 and 130. We've got a responsive bid now for just under 103, so we would like to increase that to $103,000. And the total of those six projects equals $34,000.
Do I have a motion that we approve the additional appropriation from capital outlay funds?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? Before I call for the vote, what will that leave our capital outlay fund balance at?
A little over $300,000.
Still $300,000, okay, great. Okay, have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, information items. Our next work session will be May 14th at 4:00 at the Napp Professional Learning Center, and our next board meeting will be May 14th, 7:00 p.m. here at the historic Currituck Courthouse. And that, by the way, will be our first live broadcast for our board meeting. Can't wait for that.
Actually, Dr. Dobney, tonight is live.
Oh, is? I didn't know. All right. I stand corrected. Tonight was live. Don't know if it's live or Memorex. Okay, next.
I have a couple of announcement, information items, if you don't mind, please. I just wanted to remind everyone that JP Napp's graduation will be May 25th at 7:00 at College of the Albemarle, and we'll be sending you more detailed information, I'm sure. Currituck County High School's graduation is June 8th at 7:00, and that will be on their campus, and we'll also be sending more information about on that. I just wanted to make sure everybody had that on their calendars. And Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week will be the week of April 30th through May 4th, and I just wanted to take a moment to say how much we appreciate the hard work of our staff across the board, all of our staff and our teachers, administrators, everyone, custodians, child nutrition, bus drivers, the whole gamut. And if I left anybody out, I apologize, but it takes everyone to make this a successful school system, and we've had a wonderful year, so just a word of thanks.
Great, thank you. Next, Board Member Comments. Remember, this is live. Amy?
I just wanted to remind everyone that next Friday, the 27th, is Relay for Life, and I hope everyone will come out and support this wonderful cause. It'll be at Currituck County High School. I think it starts at 5:00 and goes all night till, I believe, noon, 11:00 or noon the next day.
Mr. Barnes?
I'd like just to say, as we recognize our sports a lot for doing this and winning all the championships, as our student members just said, we've got math, science, spelling, band, all of those compete, too, and bring a lot of honors back to our school system. And as, like you say, teacher appreciation, employee appreciation.
Employee appreciation.
We want to thank everyone for all the good work you do.
Thank you. Ms. Hethridge?
I just want to thank Buddy White and all of the kids that participated, and I've got to get this name right, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat Drama. It was, it was wonderful. He, he doesn't, he doesn't know, I shouldn't say that. He's wonderful at what he does, and I don't know how he does it year after year. He, he just has that compassion, dedication, and hard work that's needed to make these productions go on and on every year, and I would just like to commend him and all of the students that participated.
Mr. Simmons?
Today, we had a work session on our budget, and first off, I'd like to thank not only our teachers and administrators and our accounting department, but I'd like to thank Ms. Scholler. Last year was a very tough time as far as the budget, and she stepped up and we balanced our budget last year. And once again, I thank the people in our county are going to be very pleased when they see our school budget. It's a tough job when you have to come in and work with what you have to do what she has done this year. So I'd like to thank all of our central office personnel, principals, down to the teachers, to everybody who worked on the budget, and I'm very thankful.
I would just like to echo the comments of my fellow board members, you know, especially when it comes to recognizing all the students that do a remarkable job, both athletically and non-athletically, academically. And also, would like to really thank our staff and teachers and, you know, just everyone that has to work with our students to make us one of the best school districts in the state. And with that, I would like to call for a closed session under General Statute 143-318.11 for Reasons Number 1 and 6. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and since there will be no further board business after the closed session, I'm going to call for an adjournment of the regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone, have a good night.